Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. Welcome to the installation and valediction ceremony of the 56th City Council of the City of Bakersfield. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of December 18th, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
I am here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Welcome to the council for the privilege of being here to open in prayer tonight, and I'm kind of excited about it. I've lived here my whole life, my wife has. We've raised our children here and grandchildren here, and I'm kind of excited about new things in the air, so let's call on the Lord together. Let's pray. Father, we thank you that in this nation, men have been calling on your presence and your grace and your empowerment for these two centuries, and we're so grateful, Lord, that you've heard our cry. We even pray tonight, Lord, that as we celebrate these incoming and thank those that are outgoing, Lord, we thank you, God, for all that you're doing in our city. May you continue, God, in your providence, to show grace and mercy and love and kindness to those who lead us. Your word calls us to pray for our leaders, and we do that tonight. As new ones are placed here, old ones continue on this great work. We continue to commit them to you as we commit this wonderful city to you in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you all still remain standing? We'll have the presentation of the colors, followed by Jasmine Baschertas leading us in the pledge after the flags come down, and she's 11 years old, and the daughter of our councilmember-elect. Present colors.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have some special guests with us, some elected officials, Assemblywoman Jasmeet Baines from the 35th District, Dr. Baines, you're somewhere out there, Supervisor Letizia Perez, Kern County District 5 Supervisor, former councilmember of Ward 6, Jackie Sullivan, and former councilmember of Ward 7, Russell Johnson. Thank you so much for your presence. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We'd request that you turn off your phones, please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos, and for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, and outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. I have a special presentation at this point, and I'm going to ask those who are standing in the back to please sit down. We won't be able to move ahead until everyone's seated for fire reasons. And speaking of fire, is there a chief in the house? I think I need you to stand here in case we have any fires. The year was 1995. Braveheart won the Best Pictures at the Academy Awards. Toy Story, Batman Forever, Apollo 13 ruled at the box office. Amazon sold its first book. The Macarena topped the charts while Seinfeld and Friends were the most popular shows on TV. And Chief John Frando was officially hired by the City of Bakersfield as a firefighter. Since then, Chief has gone on to hold many other titles, climbing the fire ladder of the department positions, with the most recent being our wonderful Fire Chief. Now we're here almost 30 years later, and Chief Frando has become an integral leader in our city's agency. Chief Frando, you've represented us so well. It's time for his retirement, just in case you didn't know that. He's leaving us. Thank you for your integrity, professionalism, and we're just so thankful for your commitment to the service of our city and to the residents of our city. And it's my honor to be able to present you the certificate of recognition and for 29 years, you deserve a medal. City Manager Clegg. Stay up here. I think Christian might say a few words.
Congratulations, Chief. Just wanted to share a couple of words in addition to, of course, a very successful and storied career. Most important to me are the values that Chief Frando really emits and reflects in the work that he does. Chief Frando has been a consummate professional. He really thinks about the best things for this community. He's been an incredible team player. He cares deeply about his fire team, but also about the entire city team, and thinks hard about his colleagues, the other department directors. But most importantly, Chief's integrity and his honesty in what he brings to the table and caring about this community is really what defines his career, and so thank you so much, Chief, for your service.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thank you, members of the City Council. Mr. Clegg, the thank yous definitely go both ways. I would like to thank you for the opportunities that I have been given to be able to serve this great community, a community where I was born and raised, where my family and friends live. I've been blessed to be part of the organization, not just the City Fire Department, but the entire city organization. I've rubbed elbows with so many great professionals who care deeply about the safety, security, and well-being of the city. I'm humbled to have been a part of something much bigger than myself. Thank you again for the opportunity. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you also to my wife Vanessa, who's in attendance. She's been really the backbone of our family, has really taken on the lion's share of the duties around the house, especially when I was in suppression and working through trying to earn my master's degree at Cal State Bakersfield and trying to promote. So it's because of her contributions to my career, my family, my education, that I am today who I am. So thank you to my wife as well.
Madam Clerk, next item, please. In keeping with Council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at a later time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received four speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Eddie Lane, followed by Sharon Brill, followed by Aunt Chilauer,
Good evening. Amidst all this celebration, I feel like it's hard to do business, but I need to do a little bit of business tonight. Congratulations to the current council and to the incoming council people and to all of the friends and supporters who are here this evening. The business of this city is so critically important to the well-being of all of us, all the citizens. And we who are regular citizens appreciate all of you. Thank you. We had an opportunity, we were here on the 20th of November, and we were charged with beginning to do some work on tree issues while we're doing it. We, you will get pictures, they look very much alike from last Friday when we were down at Truxton Lakes. And we had a very, very good working group meeting yesterday with city staff. We had Kern River Parkway there, we had UCSB, that's my grad, sorry, I talk about my high school, I graduated from Cal State University of Bakersfield, and the Sierra Club there. And we're passing out a series of recommendations that came out of that meeting. So we're, we're ready to go to work. We're actually starting kind of a working group, so when we are, when you're ready to charge us formally, we're ready to go to work. But one more congratulations to current and future council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Next speaker, please.
Sharon Brill.
I'd like to thank you again for allowing us to discuss the tree canopy situation in Bakersfield. And I'd like to follow up now with understanding how our committee of dedicated citizens that showed up at the last meeting, how we will proceed. Could we possibly get an update on the referral forming our committee that will be looking at tree canopy, taking inventory, meeting regularly, giving feedback to the council regarding our tree canopy?
Thank you. Mr. Clegg, can you follow up with her later, maybe? Unless you wish to make a few comments now.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor and Council, city staff has been discussing what an advisory group formation should look like. We've given some direction to Rick Anthony and Darren Budak on that advisory group, and in the new year, we'll be reaching out to folks.
Thank you.
Okay. We greatly appreciate your support, and good luck to the leading council people, and good luck for the ones that are incoming, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Next speaker, please.
Aunt Chilauer.
And then I'm going to ask for those of you who are standing in the back to please take a seat, and then Ms. Lauer, if you can just wait until everybody's seated, please. Welcome.
Okay. So good evening, everybody. So I can echo what Sharon Brill and Eddie Lane actually said. So CSUB and our community is ready to help the city to implement the tree plan in a way that is sustainable, supported by experts, gets good feedback, and is not a waste of funds. You know, we are here to help, and we need an official referral that we can get started. Everybody is eager to help with urban heat island effect, shade, you know, natural carbon sequestration, making our city beautiful. And we have a lot of support from the community to help everybody to get this done. Okay? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Rick Andretos.
And for those of you who have just entered, there's some seats over here, and we just welcome you to sit down. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Rick Andriannis. Appreciate the time tonight. I'm here to talk about something that doesn't get discussed very often, and that is the crisis of feral cat population here in Bakersfield. I've lived in a lot of states. I will say personally, what I've experienced here is probably one of the most severe out of any of the places I've lived. First, I want to just let everybody know that there is, there are laws against animal cruelty and dumping of animals, and I request that we up our efforts to enforce those laws. Also, my wife is a member of a community program that does TNR, which is trap-neuter-return. Part of their duties are to go out to these feral cat communities, feed them, get them acclimated to seeing humans, and then be able to trap them, take them to the vet, get them neutered, and then release them back, with the intent being we reduce the feral cat population or at least stem it from, from growing. So I have also participated in, in some of these events. I have personally been bitten to where my finger is permanently messed up, for lack of a better term, through an infection. I've been sprayed by a skunk. And the volunteers do this on their own time with their own money in an effort to help, and some of them are verbally assaulted by members of the community where they're trapping and feeding. There are also laws against that. So I just ask that we do what we can to help enforce those laws, educate the community, and let them know that these people that are out there are actually trying to help and reduce this feral cat population. There are shelters out there that could use more help and assistance, and I just ask for you guys to take this into account, think about it, and think about what you could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts to volunteer.
Thank you, sir, for commenting this evening. I really appreciate you lifting up this issue. It is an important issue for the City of Bakersfield to address, and in fact, I think you'd be happy to know that the city actually funds a TNR program, and perhaps it's time for us to revisit that program and its effectiveness and perhaps expand that program. So I'll make a referral tonight to the Safe and Healthy Communities Committee that we take, take on this topic in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar Item 6 or Appointments, Items 12A through E, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The Consent Calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on New Business Item 11A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak on this item later when it's called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on Consent Calendar Item 6 or Appointments, Item 12A through E?
Mayor Go, we've received four speaker cards regarding, regarding items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Carl Nacita, followed by Leah Carter, followed by Maria Polite, followed by Bill Bauer.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Welcome to all the new City Council members and the, and the outgoing ones. Thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate everything that the City Council does. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'd like to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Carl Nacita. I'm applying for appointment to the Miscellaneous Civil Service Commission. My wife Beverly and I have been residents of the city for 43 years. I'm originally from the East Coast and came to California as a broadcast journalist. Over the years, I shifted careers and joined the public sector, retiring from the Santa Monica Police Department. My educational background includes studies in communications, law, and public administration. I'm honored to be, give back to our community that I so love by serving on this important commission. Thank you, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Nacita. Next speaker, please.
Leah Carter.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Leah Carter. I am from the Kern Gateway Trail Committee. Creating a 15-mile connected trail in the Kern Canyon, high above the majestic Kern River, is going to be amazing, and people are going to come from all over to experience the beauty of this trail. Also, supporting this trail is supporting public health because it's going to get people out to exercise. Exercise is helpful in preventing chronic diseases, which is great for Kern County as well. On behalf of the committee, the Kern Gateway Trail Committee, and on behalf of the 2,000 people that signed our petition, we greatly appreciate the support and effort of the City Council in passing this resolution. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maria Polite.
Please introduce yourself.
It's a pleasure to be here again. My name is Maria Polite, and I'm speaking in favor of the 15-mile trail. I'm so excited. I'm 82 years old. I intend to walk all 15 miles of it. I've been walking in the canyon since I've been in Bakersfield, and it's a beautiful place, and to think we're going to get this amazing trail. Thank you so much to the staff that supports it, and I hope all of you will vote for this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polite. Next speaker, please.
Bill Bauer.
My name is Bill Bauer. I grew up in Bakersfield, so I'm very familiar with the terrain and the areas around Bakersfield. Over the last 15 years, I'm a local hiking guide and organizer. I've interacted with hundreds of hikers over the last 15 years, and I'm also amateur photographer. And I've seen a lot of people's lives, the quality of their lives greatly improved by hiking, getting outside, seeing things, going on wildflower hikes. The canyon is an amazing place for wildflowers during the springtime. So because of that, I'm here also in support of this particular proposal, and I hope that the council members will support this as well. So we just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mayor Go, that was our final public speaker.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 6A through 6I for approval.
Thank you. Colleagues, does anybody wish to recuse themselves or pull an item? See none?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Mayor Go, if I may please have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
And Councilmember Cor.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Installation Ceremony.
Thank you. And I ask now Councilmember Freeman if you would join me at the podium. Councilmember Freeman, seven-plus years of outstanding service. Thank you so much for your investment in Ward 5 and in our city, and you have brought wisdom, so many, many years of development. Thank you for your leadership as Chair of Planning and Development and Legend Lit, and then all the other committees that you served on, many community services, personnel, water resources, and your leadership in keeping this city business-friendly. That is our goal. We've heard you speak on, on that many times, wanting to attract employers and create jobs. Thank you for also improving our city's image. You've talked about that many times, and then your strong fiscal policy. We really appreciate you. We want to celebrate you. It's my honor on behalf of the City of Bakersfield to present the certificate of recognition in honor of your dedicated service and seven years of outstanding leadership. I'm at all. I just stay here. City Manager Clegg.
Councilmember Freeman has been advocating to the city for good-looking streets, landscaping, and boulevards for years and years. He's seen what it can look like well. He's built what can look like well, and is encouraging all of us to do the same. And so we're very pleased, Councilmember, to present to you Bruce Freeman Boulevard. For many of our guests, Councilmember Freeman is also a major Harvard fan and alum, and so we present to you also this customized memorial sign for B. Freeman, star player on the football team of Harvard. Lastly, Councilmember Freeman, your accomplishments visibly, tangibly, in the community will be seen for many, many years to come. This is just a small token, though, to recognize you for your seven years of service that you can keep with you in your home or office, and so, so thank you so much for your dedicated service to this community.
And we'll have you go back up, and we'll offer comments later. What passion. Four years of outstanding service, done it all with a heart. Thank you for your service to Ward 6, to our entire community, your leadership as Chair of Community Services, and then your service on planning and development, personnel, safe and healthy neighborhoods. Councilmember Gray, I know that you've been trying to protect our neighborhoods, being a good steward of taxpayer dollars, and wanting to see new and wonderful jobs created, and then a patriot and a lover of God. Thank you so much for bringing all of that into your service. It's my honor on behalf of the City of Bakersfield to present the certificate of recognition City Manager Clegg.
Councilmember Gray is a person who speaks and acts from her heart, and she's always been committed to doing what she felt was right to her conscience. And so I think, Patty, you could always say that you did it your way. So Patty Gray Way is presented to you. Councilmember Gray has also done important things for our community in continuing to have, focus on topics that are important to her, and I think it would be fair have focus on topics that are important to her, and I think it would be fair to say those topics that even Councilmember Jackie Sullivan felt was important, and then Councilmember Gray has continued in honor of those things, and so we also have this memorial street sign, "In God We Trust." And Councilmember Gray, I've shared this with Councilmember Gray personally, but I know, I don't think she would mind me sharing that she didn't seek out elected office for herself, it was for the community, and I've always shared that I think that those best public servants are those that come to serve the public, and so in honor of your four years of service, we also present this plaque to you. Thank you, Patty.
Councilmember Freeman, we're so grateful for you. We invite you at this time to offer any remarks that you would like.
Time for statements, all right. But before I forget, I want to be sure, I thank and commend the city staff of Bakersfield for the, for working with me so politely and effectively, responsively. I couldn't have asked for a more courteous and responsive staff, so, and I don't think that's true in every city, but we have a great staff and makes our job so much easier as councilpeople. And next, I'd like to thank my fellow councilmembers for putting up with me, collaborating with me, helping me to solve problems, being friends. When I first came on the council, you know, I came 33, whatever, or more years in the private sector, and in the private sector, real estate development, which is a particularly hard-nosed, aggressive business, kind of like the oil company, huge ups and downs, crashes, but in that business, you learn to be aggressive, always getting up again, already getting knocked down, and you, that sort of private sector experience has made me realize and imbued me with a sense you always move forward, you always stay positive, you set me up the future, you don't worry about the past, you don't procrastinate, make decisions quick, and you move forward, forward, forward. And it was a little hard for me to adjust to the public sector when I first came on, where a lot more emphasis on collaboration, listening to others, gaining support. You know, for me, in the past, it was sort of nice, you'd have a team meeting, listen to everybody, and said, "All right, here's the decision, we're going." And it's not like that in government. I'm not saying it should, but I do think it could benefit by being a little more like the private sector, and, you know, maybe that's partly our role as councilpeople, to be a little impatient. My prior boss had a lot of sayings, but one of them, I don't think originally with him, was the, you know, "Work expands to fill the time allotted for it." And there's nothing so true as that. You make decisions when you have to, and I remember many nights working for this man. The meeting would end at 6:00 in LA, down in his tower, and he'd say, "And don't leave until that memo's on my desk." You'd be there till midnight or one of them, "Well, you didn't leave till it was on his desk." The problem was solved. And those are good lessons, and so I hope my colleagues from the private sector keep pushing, because we need, we need the collaboration of government, but we need that impetus to not procrastinate, to move forward faster. I know everyone on this council is dedicated to the city, every single one of them. They're not here for the money, they're here because they love Bakersfield and want to see the city improve. I hope maybe I helped a little bit in my seven years. I probably got more out of the council than the council got out of me. Maybe probably learned to be a little better listener, learned some new skills, you know. I'm currently the oldest person on the council, and, you know, you can still grow and learn when you're my age, too. So, this was a great experience for me. I want to thank, thank everybody, the city, and my colleagues and staff for giving me this experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Your experience, your public, your private sector experience have just been so invaluable. We're better because of you. Councilmember Gray.
Well, Bruce, it's been a joy to serve with you. Yeah, I miss that. I have to write my notes down, because if I don't, I'm going to forget something, so bear with me just for a few minutes, if you would, because I wanted to make sure that I was able to honor those people that needed to be honored, and hopefully inspire others. First of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is an amazing group tonight to have here for those that are incoming and those that are of us that are outgoing. But I want to start by saying first that my heart is overflowing with gratitude for the opportunity that I've had to serve this great city. I never aspired to take on this position, as the city manager had shared with you. My good friend Jackie Sullivan approached me about a year prior, and my husband, and my first response was, "No, are you kidding me? Never." And once I told her no, the Holy Spirit began to work on my heart. And about six months later, I was making a prayerful decision with my husband. It wasn't one that we made easily. We decided, I'd say we decided, to take on the challenge, and I felt like I had the support that I needed to be able to step into this position. So, if you could allow me to thank those that I am just so grateful for. First of all, I want to thank my heavenly Father for creating me for service and challenging me to do great things beyond what I could have ever imagined. My Savior, Jesus Christ. Karen asked me last night, "Are you going to cry tomorrow, Patty?" And I felt like saying, "Is the Pope Catholic?" But I'm sorry, I'm just a little tender, more tender, sorry, Bruce. My Savior, Jesus Christ, were giving me the strength to fulfill my responsibilities. As I was coming here tonight, I thought, "How in the world, we just retired in July, how did I do everything that I'm doing this time of the year?" And it's only because the Lord has given me the strength to do it. And for the Holy Spirit, who leads me through this journey called life, without Him, I would be nowhere. Next, I'd like to thank my husband Everett, who always stood behind me and encouraged me. Sometimes he wasn't quite as encouraging as I needed him to be, but most of the time, especially, let's say, after those tougher meetings when I'm driving home and I need somebody to talk to. We've worked together as a team through thick and thin in business for 41 years, and then married for 50, and I'm eternally grateful for you, honey. You are the joy of my life. I met him at 16, so that's pretty much my life, huh? And I'm stepping aside this position because of you. I'll get it together here. Somebody tell a joke or something on this dais, would you please help me out of this?
We love you, keep going.
Thank you. To my sons, my daughter-in-laws, and grandchildren, who've watched me juggle many balls in the last four years, even shaking their heads at times, like, "Mom, what were you thinking? We told you so," but still supported me with pride and curiosity at times while celebrating my victories. Thank you for allowing your mom to answer the call. And to our friends of almost four decades, Ed and Ray Allen Esri, Ed, a retired BPD, range master, investigator, SWAT member, one who's served the city faithfully. And my dear Ray Allen, who is my prayer partner, calling on her today, and my loyal friend, who has always encouraged, had given me an encouraging word and a shoulder available whenever I needed. Thank you. And Lance and Sue, I call Sue the fun friend, she's always got something she's laughing about. Business people here in Bakersfield, Ellis England, behind me from day one, encouraging me when I doubted myself, walked my ward and fundraised. Sue went on to accept my appointment to keep Baker so beautiful, and has faithfully served the city for the same four years I have. Good job, Sue, thank you so much, very much appreciated. Kathy Abernathy and team, including her daughter Madeline. Kathy, you have heard this from me before, but thank you for helping me grow into this position by challenging me to recognize things about myself that I was fully unaware of. You are a great mentor and coach, but more importantly, I have found a friend for life, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you for your sacrificial, hard work that you have invested in our community for decades, way before I ever knew you. Thank you, you and your husband, Mark. And to our city staff, our city manager's office, Christian, thank you for listening every week to my concerns and my opinions, at times even rants. In fact, a lot of times, even rants. Why genuinely, you weighed out every word that was spoken, and I knew you heard me. Thank you for that. The help team, I have to mention them. The girls that are in the background, when any of you citizens in this city send an email, make a phone call, these are the girls, thank God for them, that take every one of those emails and make sure that our citizenry, it's put, that they find the right people to deal with their issues, and then send them to us as councilmembers so that we can take care of those that we feel like need additional attention. So, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you, and I'm so grateful. I think this department was formed just about the time I came on the council, so it was just in time for me, let me tell you. And you're hidden in the background, girls, but you're never forgotten, never. You've been just such a true blessing to our city. To our city attorney's office, don't let Jenny fool you, she's not a, she's got a soft heart, and I've seen up close, Jenny, your hard work with you and your personnel. You all have taken your jobs very seriously. There's not a member of this city staff that I've worked with that haven't done so, but I want to tell you that our, that our attorneys in this city have prevented us councilmaker, councilmembers from making what could be very costly mistakes at times. Would you all agree with me on that one? And I've enjoyed working with each one of you and have appreciated how you've respected me, shown me that respect, and helped me along. Thank you. And to our mayor, Karen Go, who continues to support her city council, city manager, staff, and the citizens of Bakersfield with her heart for this city, nobody's got a bigger heart than Karen. She is continually working hard behind the scenes to advocate with state and federal government officials for city policies that will benefit our cities while at the same time attending every invitation that goes out to her, and I have never seen anybody more dedicated and hardworking than this woman, and we all have a lot to be grateful for, and Karen, and thank God we're going to be swearing you in again for the next four years next month. So, we're blessed to have her, and thank you for your support and friendship. And to Chief Terry and Chief Frondo, I don't see Chief Terry out there tonight, is he here?
He's protecting us somewhere.
He's in the back, okay, he's in the back. I just want you to know that you two have a lot to be proud of, a lot to be proud of. Your leadership has created an exemplary team of frontline departments that our city is benefiting from. Every single police officer or firefighter that I have ever met, I have been extremely impressed with, and they are salt of the earth, cream of the crop. Our two departments do the best, absolute best job of hiring the right people, and they're there when disaster and tragedy strike, and from the upper ranks to the administration staff to the front lines, I've never met an officer, firefighter, or person in a support role that I was not totally impressed with. Again, thank you for your service, each one of you, in uniform or out of uniform in those departments. And to the Thursday morning prayer group, most of you don't even know who they are in this city, but we do, thank you for the hundreds of prayers that you pray on a weekly basis over this city. You women and one gentleman in that group, sitting in for his deceased wife, have done battle in the heavenlies and have blessed our city beyond measure, bringing heaven to earth. Thank you for your support, encouraging words, and your prayers. You are a huge asset to our city. So, ladies, I hope you hear this, if you know any of them, make sure they turn on YouTube tomorrow and hear it. And then at last, but certainly not least, to my constituents in Ward 6, thank you for putting your trust in Patty Gray, just an ordinary person that nobody really knew, someone that they still decided to take a chance on and elected me to this position. I do admit that when I stepped into the seat with fear and trembling, trust me, but I have learned so much by facing the challenges that came with the position. I would hope that I can inspire others to go beyond what you think you can do, any of you in this audience today, by trusting those around you who cheer you on, but even more important, by trusting the God that created you. Serving on this council has enriched my life forever. Thank you, Bakersfield. So, in closing, I'd like to say, tonight is a bittersweet moment for me. Bitter because I have enjoyed representing this great city, meeting new people, building new relationships, watching the local government at work, and having the opportunity with my one vote to support policies that I would benefit all citizens while at the same time protecting taxpayer dollars and speaking out when I disagreed, has been an honor. I have enjoyed being part of building something better for us all. I will very much miss interaction. Sweet because I'm leaving this seat in good hands. When endorsing a predecessor, I was looking for a person who would believe in and help lead the city towards greatness. I found that person in Zach Baschertash. He could not have been a better choice for Bakersfield. He's a native of Bakersfield, he's a good man who earns the respect of others that communicate with him, just wait, Bakersfield, till you get to know this man, you're going to love him. He's a man of his word and one that can be trusted, a family man, a man of faith, a businessman, and a man that can intellectually articulate his opinions and arguments. Zach will be an asset in finding solutions for our city, and Zach, I just wish you all the best. I just wish you all the best. So last, I want to reiterate the fact that we are blessed to live in the county of Kern and the city of Bakersfield, where we are known for our hard work, traditional values and generosity. And that is all over the United States. We're known for that. I think of this quote when I think of our city. You all have probably heard it before, but it bears repeating for this occasion tonight, and I hope it will inspire my colleagues that are coming and my colleagues that I'm leaving. This quote has been attributed to Alexis de Tocqueville, a French commentator and author who wrote Democracy in America in 1835. He said, "America is great because America is good. And if America ever ceases to be good, she will cease to be great." This truth has not changed since the founding of our great nation. As we all continue in our roles as leaders and citizens, mothers, fathers, teachers, business owners, retirees that are volunteering for the Kern River in this wonderful community that we call home, let us, us as a group, all do our part to continue to be good so that we in the city of Bakersfield will never cease to be great. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve this great city, and God bless you all in the city of Bakersfield.
Councilmember Gray, you've been a blessing to our community. That tenderness that you displayed, the commitment to your convictions and your reliance on God for wisdom have made our city more beautiful. So thank you. And colleagues, at this point, I would invite you to make any comments that you would like. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have to say I'm getting a little sad up here at this time. Both Councilmember Gray and Councilmember Freeman have been incredible assets to the city council, in my opinion. And I don't think the public really appreciates how much and how often we work together, not only on this dais, but also in various different committee meetings, oftentimes one-on-one for coffee or for a lunch, or for just a check-in on any particular topic, or sometimes just general vision of the city. And I'm going to miss you two. And I want to thank you on behalf of my constituents for your service to the whole city. I want to address you both individually. Councilmember Freeman, you and I started roughly the same time, and it's been a real honor to serve side by side with you over the last seven-plus years and get to know you and learn from you. And I've always appreciated how thoughtful you have been with every single issue that came before us on this dais. I felt that you have really listened and considered all sides of the issue before making decisions. And I think that makes a really effective public servant. I also want to thank you because you were one of four people on the dais who supported the Brunswick Lane Navigation Center, which has helped now over 700 people off the streets, move off the streets and into either shelter or permanent housing over the last few years. And that is not nothing. That is something very special that the city of Bakersfield has been able to invest in, whereas many other communities have not been so fortunate. And I want to thank you for your leadership and stepping up in that particular issue. It's been an honor to work with you. You know, Council, sorry, city manager Clegg mentioned that Councilmember Freeman actually played for the Harvard football team, but we're a team up here as well. And I wanted to give to you on behalf of the council and on behalf of the Bakersfield Condors, Condors jersey. Councilmember Gray, you get one too. And I think you'll be great on the ice, actually, knowing how aggressive you are.
I don't want to break a hip.
But no, practice starts Monday. But I want to say to you, it's been a joy working with you the last four years, understanding your perspective. I admire how much you articulate your faith in a very sincere and authentic way for all of us in the community. And I also want to say I appreciate our ability to work together to honor our veterans in the local community, in particular, the World War II memorial at Jastro Park and the Avenue of Heroes that we've established this year. It's because of your pushing and a lot of the community members and that we were able to accomplish that together. So I want to thank you for your leadership, for your service, and here's your jersey.
There we go. There we go. Councilmember Weir.
Well, thank you. Patty, I can't believe you're leaving. I depend on you a lot in our conversations and our thoughts and just being together and knowing that we're a block and we were hooked at the hips. So I'm going to miss you. And I hope that you'll find the happiness that you've been looking for and share that and that your life just continues to grow and bloom. Bruce, I have known you for many a year, and it's been interesting because I would come and beg for money and you would teach me a lesson. And I always felt like I was more educated when I left. And I really appreciated that. And you've always supported me and I've tried my way to support you too. And the lessons that you've brought, I won't forget them, but I will miss you. So good luck with the rest of your life and God bless you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure working with both of you. Patty Gray, I share that, you know, we've both had our own businesses and we share that experience and also a strong faith in that we make our decisions based on that faith, I think we share. And Bruce, you know, I'm also a real estate developer as Bruce and had that experience and understand and was able to work with Bruce when, you know, the importance of the way a city looks and the quality of life that you produce with developments, the importance of streets that serve all people and the complete streets, and the importance of public safety, parks, and many things we agreed on and we work hard on together. So I appreciate working with both of you. You know, you're here because you want to serve the community, and that's a wonderful thing. I appreciate your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to my seatmate, I still remember the first day that I took this seat. I didn't even know how to turn the mic on, and Patty's like, "Here, press this button." And since that day, your generosity and spirit and commitment to this council was something for me to learn as well in my first two years, as I'm learning all of the processes, but also in new teamwork and new collaboration. And a lot of the times, you know, just being able to brainstorm things with you, sitting here, have reflections and responses, really guided me. And so I want to thank you for that. And as well as Councilmember Freeman, who I love nerding out with city planning things and reading Urban Land Institute magazines. And Bruce, I appreciate your mentorship, your leadership on the council. I knew I always had someone who was pragmatic, experienced, level-headed, and you bring the experience and knowledge that guided us through a lot of the infrastructure decisions that we're making up here. And as well as in planning and development, your experience and mentorship is something I counted on as well. And I know this is not the end. I'll be bugging you a bunch for feedback and advice and mentorship in many, many years to come, but just want to thank you more than anything for your friendship. And I want to give a huge shout out to Monica. You two are so sweet and lovely people. And honestly, I didn't even realize we had a celebrity up here until recently, someone who saved the game when Harvard played Yale. And there are plenty of books and documentaries you can watch. Just Google them. Bruce Freeman was the man who made sure that Harvard won. So I needed to make that public announcement because I think he's just way too humble about it. So yeah, we were in the company of a legend, and I want to thank both of you for your time in truly serving our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just pick up where my colleague just left off. You would think that he was a natural-born head coach with how much knowledge he has and his wisdom and experience and ability to lead not only projects and initiatives, but people. And Bruce, I just got to tip my cap off to you. You've been an incredible colleague to work with, but also to learn from. You have just such a wealth of knowledge and experience that, you know, I've certainly benefited from. And, you know, I'm just so grateful for having that opportunity to have joined you on this dais. And I wish you and Monica the best, and thank you both so much for your contributions to the city. Next, Councilmember Gray, I just want to say it's been an honor. For the past four years, we both joined the dais at the same very time and after the, well, really, still in the middle of the pandemic, where we both had to run campaigns with masks on and face shields. And it's been an honor to get to know you and your passion. And also, thank you Everett for sharing her with both us on the dais, but also with our city. Your heart is so pure. You care so deeply about this community. You care about your district. And that has never been a question that I've ever had. And so I just want to say thank you so much for your service to the city, and I wish you both the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Let's give it up for Councilmember Freeman, Councilmember Gray. And now, as Councilmember Freeman, Councilmember Gray leave, I'm going to invite Vice Mayor Gonzalez, Councilmember-elect Larry Coleman, and Councilmember-elect Zach Bashertash to join the city clerk, and that's how he wants his name pronounced. We practiced.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Congratulations, Councilmembers. Councilmembers, I invite you now to please take your seat at the dais unless she, oh, she has some special presentations after that. Thank you. And now if you will all take your seats up here, and we'll invite you to make comments. So we'll ask our newly-elected officials, Councilmember Coleman, you're welcome to make comments.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your graciousness. And, okay, I want to thank the council for being welcoming. I want to introduce my family, though, if I could have a minute. My brother Greg, Greg, can you stand up? Greg traveled all the way from Windfield, Kansas, to come out here today for this. Very important for our family. Thank you. My daughters, next to him is Lindsay and Leslie, Leslie and Lindsay. And Leslie's new husband, Joel, Joell, sorry. They just got married just before Thanksgiving. So my word to you, Joel, Joell, good luck. And Deborah Gonzalez, my partner, and hi. So I just want to say that gratitude and humility that I accepted responsibility and trusted me as a councilman. I'm honored to represent the voters of Ward Five and thank them sincerely for placing their trust in me. Your voices, concerns and hopes for our community will guide my work. I also want to thank the many residents beyond Ward Five that expressed support during my campaign. And I want you to know I represent everybody. So I wanted to give a little credit to some of the groups that endorsed me, the Home Builders Association, the Realtors Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the firefighters and many other organizations. I also wanted to recognize Bruce Freeman. Thank you, Bruce, for your mentorship and your endorsement and support. I appreciate that. It's been said that I'm replacing you, but I don't feel like I'm replacing you. I'm merely following you because I don't think you're replaceable. So thank you for everything you've done. We've known each other for a long time, and it's good to see, it's good to, I appreciate the endorsement and it's good to see you moving on in your life, and I wish you well. I also wanted to thank two men that shaped my life. I'm a different man than I was when I came to Bakersfield 30 years ago. And the first person was my friend Wayne Lepine, who's gone now, but he hired me, he coached me, mentored me and kind of taught me how to be a good man, I think. And his wisdom and belief in me continue to inspire me. And whenever I'm thinking about how I'm going to resolve something, I think about, what would Dwayne do? And to Harvey Hall, and most of you know who Harvey Hall is and was. He introduced me to city government, and he got me to join the redevelopment agency and kind of ignited that spark. So I'm really confident that if he was here today, he would have been heavily involved in my campaign. So I wanted to recognize him. And I want to thank the city staff. Over the years, I've been on redevelopment agency, planning commission, measuring and a lot of other things. And city staff has always been excellent in, you know, dealing with me and the way I communicate, not so well sometimes. And they're always very gracious to me, and they always try to solve whatever problems I have, and I've always appreciated that. Then I'm grateful to my team, Kim Tapman, I think she might have left because I think she went over to start the reception afterwards. So she's always taken care of my business, kept the wheels on my business while I was running around knocking on people's doors trying to get votes. while I was running around knocking on people's doors, trying to get votes. And Arina, who's, can you wave? Yeah. And Seth, I don't know if Seth is here tonight or not. They both helped me a lot with my campaign. Finally, I want to thank God for providing me the strength, the wisdom, and courage to persevere during all this. I've frequently said that if you aren't close to God when you start one of these campaigns, you will be by the time you're done. Because the things that you need to do, you need to get that strength. And God helps you with that strength. So I'm, yeah. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve the community. And that's it. I thank you.
Well, welcome, Councilmember Coleman. And now, Councilmember Zach Bashir Tosh.
Well, I have 150-page dissertation I'm going to read from right now. I'm just kidding. I was going to take a sip of water, but Ms. Gray, your lipstick has already marked this one. I would probably drink after you, except my wife would probably beat me up. I'm just kidding. She's great. And so I would like to first thank my, my, actually, my wife. She, she, she was tremendous behind this entire campaign and just with everything in life. She's a strong woman. I'm so thankful that we have our three kids together and that she gets to help. We get to team up raising them up. And I look forward to you listening to me nag about things that I can't figure out over the next four years. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my faith in God and Him giving me the strength and the wisdom that I need to grow and to get to where I am today. There's a verse that I lived by when I was younger and still young to a lot of people. But it's, don't let anyone look down on you because you are young, but set an example in speech, conduct, purity, and in love. And, and so that, my faith is very important to me. I'd love to thank my family who knocked and walked alongside me my entire campaign. And I, campaigning and running for any type of government is not for the faint of heart. It is incredibly difficult and can be very challenging. And it's a shame to see how things have kind of become these days. And I hope that, my hope is that Bakersfield will be a community that works together to solve problems that benefit the entire body of Bakersfield. That we'll be able to have conversations without formulating opinions before we even get into the room and making our minds up. That we'll be able to do what's right by our constituents and not the groups that shout the loudest. I hope to do well by every one of you in this room. I plan on working hard. That's what my family does best. My mom, my dad, my aunts, uncles, my kids, we like to work. It's important to us. And I look forward to getting to work for all of you. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and I hope to not let you down.
Welcome, Councilmember. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I too want to thank God for giving me all the blessings that I have had in my life and giving me this opportunity to serve this wonderful community. I'd like to also thank the residents of Ward Two. You know, Ward Two is, and I often say, is the most historic ward. It is the most diverse ward. And certainly, it has much of the city's challenges in that it is, it constitutes the urban core. And so representing this area has been a challenge over the years. But it is also, and it is always, a deep honor. And I just want to thank all of the people of Ward Two, from Oleander Sunset to East Bakersfield, Southeast Bakersfield, to West Chester, to West Park, all of these wonderful communities and neighborhoods that are historic in nature and who care deeply about preserving that history and ensuring that each and every neighborhood thrives. It is, it is an honor to be your leader in Ward Two. And I look forward to working with you over the next four years. I'm also joined tonight by so many family and friends. I want to point and introduce two individuals, if I may. First and foremost, my older brother Manuel, who came all the way from Ward Three in Northeast Bakersfield to be here this evening. Manuel is 15 years older than me. I hope that's okay for me to announce. But what people don't know is often in our family gatherings, he and I tussle and have these really rich debates. And oftentimes, I get to learn a whole host of new ideas and perspectives from those things. And so he has made me stronger. He's made me smarter. And I, I've always looked up to you. And I want to thank you so much for, for being here tonight. And also, I want to thank my mother. I've known her all my life. And she's just a, she's just a wonderful person. She has, she was actually born and raised in Ward Two on Dolores Street off of Baker. And her dad was the chef, my grandpa was the chef at Bakersfield Hotel for many years and many different fine dining restaurants on Union Avenue back in the day. I never had a chance to meet him myself, but I've always been proud of that, that that has been part of our family history and contributions to the city of Bakersfield even back in the day. And so, Mom, I love you. And I want to thank you for, even today, still supporting your son so much. I appreciate you. Thank you. And finally, to our new council members, Councilmember Bashir Tosh and Councilmember Coleman, welcome to the dais. Congratulations. As you step into your roles, you will find yourselves really navigating the unique balance between representing your districts and serving the collective good of the entire city. And there's a saying that I've always carried with me that resonates with me. And that is to be stewards of the whole, but owners of the part. Now, this means for me recognizing that while you have a direct responsibility to your constituents, your decisions impact the broader health, growth, and success of Bakersfield. And you are stewards of the whole, committed to the greater good, and yet owners of the part, ensuring that the voices and needs of your wards are heard and addressed. So I believe personally that the hallmark of effective public service is really balancing these two roles, protecting the collective good while also championing local needs. And if we work with this mindset, I think we can truly build a stronger, more united city. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you. You know, there's also a paradox on serving on this governing board, city council, in that we campaign as individuals, but no one of us alone has individual authority or power. Our power comes from the council as a whole. And our ability to get things done for people relies on our willingness and our capacity to work with one another. And so I encourage all of us, as we move forward, to embrace this opportunity to serve our city with humility, integrity, and a focus on collaboration. And together, we do have the power to make Bakersfield an even better place to live for everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, welcome to our new council members. And welcome back to our long-term council member. Guests, thank you so much for being here. We're going to have a benediction by Pastor Sowers. And then we'll go out into the lobby for some refreshments. And then at 6:50, we'll reconvene again because we have actual city business to conduct. And some of you will go on and party at other places. But at this point, would you all please stand?
Well, I have to say, this feels much more like a big gigantic love fest tonight than it does a city council meeting, you know? It's been wonderful. You feel just the, the care that you have for one another, the city staff, the council members, the support of your families and friends for the incoming. We all appreciate the hard work that you guys put yourself to. It would be easy for us to forget that you wrestle with big issues in here. Homelessness and the economy and the disenfranchised, how to continue to keep Bakersfield growing and expanding in a healthy way for all that live here. These are big issues that you're going to wrestle with. And tonight, there's so much care and appreciation for one another. It'd be easy for us to forget that what starts here now for a new term is wrestling over these things. There's a, there's a verse that comes early in the book of Genesis. After the creation of humankind and the fall of humankind, there's a point where things go so badly, so fast with humanity. But it says, "And men began to call on the name of the Lord." It's the first time that is ever mentioned in Genesis, chapter four. So in closing tonight, I would just like to do what mankind who care have been doing for thousands of years and call on the name of the Lord. He said at one point, if we'll do that, He'll show us, He'll answer our, our calling upon Him and show us things that we do not know. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for these new incoming and the service of the outgoing. And tonight, we just, we do what your word says. We call on you that you might continue to bless this governing body, the city staff, the city council, with heaven's wisdom, insight, compassion, and courage to do the right thing in every case. We commit them to you. We commit our city to you now. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again, and enjoy the refreshments in the lobby. Be back at 6:50.
Do we have any police officers back there if they can just close the doors? Can we get staff to close the back doors, please? I guess I'll go closer. We lost Eric. Can you close that door, please?
I must have lined up as the first speaker. I had punched in before.
Oh, okay. I got you. Do it again, just in case this is not showing up. At this time, we will reconvene the city council meeting of December 18, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business item 11A, election of Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Before we begin, please note that if you're here to speak on new business item 11A, the city will call for public statements. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes, and there will be a 20-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
No speaker cards have been received regarding this item.
Thank you. Staff, is there any comment at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Thank you. And now, we have Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize that in this holiday spirit, there is so much more that unites us than divides us. And more than that, so much more to even be grateful for. From the city staff that join us in these meetings, many of our department directors, folks from our city attorney's office, our amazing team at the city manager's office, led by Christian, to the 911 dispatchers who work day and night, at our fire department, and also in BPD, all the way down to the gentlemen who haul away our trash from our lovely neighborhoods. There's so much to be grateful for, and we are blessed with an incredible staff and team. However, over the past four years, it has been unfortunate that many of our votes have unfortunately been divided. Many of those being four to three votes with what I think is a real opportunity for us to bridge the gap and find common ground. With the need for strong leadership, trying to bring people together, we have struggled to find common ground on issues that otherwise, and frankly, should be non-controversial. But today is a new day for this great community. Tonight, it is my honor to nominate someone for the vice mayorship, who I have worked closely with during the redistricting process, bringing us a more equitable map, representing all parts of our city and all beautiful parts of our community. She has spent years getting educated, starting at our local beloved Ridgeview High School. She has received her bachelor's at UC San Diego, and she ultimately received her master's, strategically planning for the growth of cities, just like the city of Bakersfield. She shares my values in fighting for our community, and I know that she is one who is all about helping everyday people. And she will be the unifying voice for this council over the next two years. In this role, I know she will fight for more than just her district, and it is my honor to support and nominate here tonight Ms. Munpreet Cor as the first Punjabi Vice Mayor in the history of the city of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Are there any other nominations? If not, Councilmember Cor, would you accept the nomination?
I humbly accept the nomination for Vice Mayor for the city of Bakersfield.
Thank you. So at this point, please cast your votes. Motion is unanimously approved. Congratulations. Now, next item, please.
Am I able to say a few words of thank yous to my colleagues?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I just want to first and foremost thank Councilmember Eric Arias for the nomination. I am beyond humbled to be receiving it. Honestly, I was just thinking of Councilmember Gray's words earlier, where imagining ourselves serving on this council is probably a common theme for many of us. We didn't imagine ourselves coming into these roles and roles of service. And I feel similarly. Eric, you mentioned the redistricting that we did for the betterment of our entire city. And after that, when community groups, leaders, folks that we worked with approached me to take and at least try for the seat of Ward Seven, I thought, no, there must be someone else. Please, let's find someone within the community. But it's been my humble, deeply humbling honor to serve Ward Seven so far for two years. And now, I feel incredibly honored, beyond, I'm at a loss for words really, to be able to join my council colleagues, to join the mayor, city staff, to lead the great work and move our city forward, and continue to move our city forward. It's true that while we live in times where it feels tough to bring differences together, I feel this group, even in the council previous, in my first two years, there were those little niches where you find common ground and you work through it because you know you're working for the betterment of the whole. And I too want to thank my higher being for bringing me into SEVA, into the service of people, and that being the city of Bakersfield and its residents. I want to thank my community in attendance today, my family actually in attendance today, and those watching from home, including my baby nephew, Ude Singh Samra, who's watching the livestream. And I want to also just thank my family for letting me run with my wildest dreams and vision and not really knowing what I was going to be up to, but here we are. I want to thank my colleagues for their votes and confidence in me. I've learned a tremendous amount for those who've exited, for those who have been seated on this council for the two years with me so far. And I look forward to meeting and connecting with and working with my two new colleagues as we, you know, join together and move work together for the city. And I have a few words I'd like to just share in Spanish as well. Muchas gracias para toda comunidad de Ciudad de Bakersfield. Es un honor para mí servir a nuestra ciudad. Espero poder servir a nuestros residentes y hacer crecer nuestra ciudad a nuevas alturas. And to our Punjabi residents and folks in attendance today. So with that, I want to thank my colleagues. I'm so excited to do more work. I know this is more work. I'm excited to work with city staff and move all of our great work that's already moving together. And to the residents in the city of Bakersfield, you have my full attention and support. And we are working towards a better Bakersfield, greater vision. And I know I can only accomplish that with my colleagues here and the wonderful city staff that we have. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Eric Arias, for the nomination. Thank you, colleagues, for your support. And now we carry on with more city business.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor Cor. And now, Madam City Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments item 12A, one appointment at large to the Fire Civil Service Commission due to a term expiration on December 31, 2024. to the Fire Civil Service Commission due to a term expiration on December 31, 2024.
Thank you. And we have, the vote will be conducted electronically. The city clerk will display and announce the results. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk? We're going to do it electronically?
That is correct, Mayor.
Yes, all right.
The ballot is electronic.
Thank you. And based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the appointment. Go ahead and cast your votes.
Mayor Go, candidate Michael George received a majority with four votes.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor? Cor? You get to make a motion. On the candidate.
For the candidate, making the motion to nominate Michael George to the miscellaneous, sorry, I'm clearly a rookie.
The appointment.
Yes, the appointment.
Fire Civil Service Commission.
Fire Civil Service, sorry. The agenda actually moves to the next item, just for transparency's sake. So we are appointing Michael George to the Fire Civil Service Committee.
Thank you. You have the motion. Please cast your votes.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, and congratulations, Michael George. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, next appointment, please.
Two appointments at large to Miscellaneous Civil Service Commission due to a term expiration on December 31, 2024. I ask that you please include both selections on your ballot.
Thank you. Again, the council will vote electronically, and the city clerk will display and announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding the appointment. Please cast your votes.
Mayor Go, Neila Hogan and Carl Nacita both received a majority.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, can you just make a motion on that?
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to appoint both Carl Nacita and Neila Hogan to the Miscellaneous Civil Service.
Commission.
Commission.
Thank you. And you have a motion now. Cast your votes, please.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Hogan and Mr. Nacita, for your willingness to serve. Ms. Hogan has been serving on this, and we just appreciate your willingness to continue. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
One appointment, one appointment at large to the Police Civil Service Commission due to a term expiration on December 31, 2024.
Thank you. And again, the same order will apply, so go ahead and cast your votes.
Mayor Go, candidate Nancy Chafin received a majority at four votes. Jacob Hall received two votes, and Ronald Wolf, one vote.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Cor?
A motion to appoint Nancy Chafin to the Police Civil Service Commission.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Bashir Tash voting no.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Joy, for your willingness to serve. And now, the next appointment, please.
One appointment to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, Mayor's regular member.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward, therefore I nominate Heather Pennella for the Mayor's Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, regular member. Heather has served as the alternate member since 2017, along with the late John Enrique. She has just been so diligent in leading numerous efforts to beautify our community, to clean our community. She's always one phone call away and just such a joy to work with. I am forever grateful for her service thus far, and I know that John would be very, very proud to have her now as the regular appointee. So I would ask Councilmember Cor, Heather Pennella, please.
We have a motion to appoint Heather Pennella to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
Thank you. You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And next item, please.
One appointment to the Youth Commission, Ward Seven, alternate member, to a term to expire July 2025.
Thank you. This appointment is also by Ward, therefore I will call on our Vice Mayor to share her Ward Seven Youth Commission alternate appointment nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. My nomination for the Youth Commission alternate position is for Gunit Cor. Gunit is in attendance today with her mom. Hi, Gunit. Gunit is a 16-year-old student at Independence High School. She's a passionate and committed leader who aspires to put good into the world. While excelling academically, Gunit also serves as the ASB Vice President, where she helps foster school engagement and organize impactful events to enhance inclusivity at her school. She began volunteering a year ago at a nonprofit organization, the Dora Genuine Connections, where she, among others, were able to connect and interact with the older generation for meaningful relationships. While balancing various leadership positions and activities, Gunit enjoys spending time with her family, traveling, reading, and engaging in unique learning experiences. Recognized for her resilience and innovative thinking, she's passionate about solving real-world challenges and is looking forward to studying business to advance her goals. Gunit's vision is to make a difference through collaboration, creativity, and determination. Thank you for wanting to serve on the Youth Commission, and I look forward to you joining our other Ward Seven Youth Commissioner as well as the others. Thanks, Gunit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, motion, please.
A motion to appoint Gunit to the Youth Commission as the Ward Seven alternate.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Gunit, thank you so much. Congratulations. We look forward to your leadership and your collaboration on the Youth Commission. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
So if you'd like to make a statement, this would be the time. If you would like to party somewhere else, then we will not have any. So I don't see any requests to speak. I think everybody's had a great time talking. Councilmember Coleman?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry.
I thought you've already talked for a long time.
Oh, you don't know me very well. I just wanted to thank the council for welcoming me. Me, most of you, I've known you for years, and so I thank you. But I wanted to congratulate Vice Mayor Carr for her election as Vice Mayor. Most people don't know this, but Ms. Carr went to high school with my daughter, and I always told them that they would catch up to me at some point. But now I find myself catching up with her. She's become a very successful, educated woman, and I congratulate you on your election.
Thank you.
I have nothing further to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. I see no other requests, and what a wonderful night of celebration. Thank you to all of you colleagues. Thank you so much. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we stand adjourned at 7:16.